Meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
For the last and final time, all school board members are present and accounted for.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which has stand one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have some, a lot of recognitions. Our first recognition is the Carmel High School Girls Cross Country Team State Champions. Mr. Inskeep.
Thank you, and good evening. And as I start right now, I'm going to have members of the Girls Cross Country Team come forward, as well as our coaches here this evening, Mr. Williams and any others that are here. So if you could come up to my left, your right, and I'm going to talk about you as you come up here. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. And I'd like to most, one of our things before talking about these young ladies and their positive impact is to say a little bit about their parents. And their parents provided a lot of positive support to this group this year. And it hasn't, hasn't been easy for this group the last few years. And they persevered and really came together as a team this year. And I think that was pretty evident to all of us that were around it. And just so nice to see the smiles on their faces and all their hard work and dedication pay off. But I know for them, they know how much they've worked and all the commitment and dedication that goes into being a great distance runner and to be a team out there on the course because it really is a team sport wrapped up around individuals. So it's a lot of fun to watch. But this group of greyhounds won the state championship in October at the Laverne Gibson Course in Terre Haute. It was the 20th overall state title for the Carmel Girls Cross Country Program, which is the most in Indiana by a lot. Individually, top runners for Carmel at state were sophomore Larkin Taylor in 10th and junior Sadie Foley in 12th at the state meet. Their head coach is Scott Williams, and I'm going to invite him to come up here to introduce these young ladies and have them come in front of the board.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. On my left and going in that direction, first we have Senior Katie DeScoli. Next is Senior Elagadis. Next is Senior Olivia Munt. Sophomore Annabelle Pollard. Freshman Margot Halli. Junior Sadie Foley. And then sophomore Larkin Taylor. And then next to Larkin is Assistant Coach Matt Baller.
Okay, I can't help myself because I was at the state meet. And these girls just dominated Laverne Gibson Golf, National Cross Country Course. It is an extremely difficult course, and they just, just destroyed the other teams. And it was an amazing thing to watch, the way they did that. Faced adversity, still got it done. And for the record, cross country is the greatest sport in the entire world. All the other ones are okay. No disrespect to all those balls and bats and other equipment, but running, cross country runners are incredible. Sorry.
Also, our parent club. Got this photo for Dr. Beresford. So the big thing at the state meet is to get up on the stage. And this is our top 18 assistant coaches, all the people involved. And just a little known fact, Dr. Beresford, not a coach of cross country, he got it way back in the day at Ben Davis. He has an acute knowledge of cross country and is truly a fan and could probably make a workout plan. Maybe we'll work on that this spring.
Our next recognition is a spotlight on excellence on our Champions Together Committee. Again, Mr. Inskeep.
Thank you. We've got some other terrific greyhounds to honor here this evening. And I'm going to have our members of Special Olympics Indiana and the IHSA that are here this evening to come forward. And then also, I've got members of our Champions Together Committee that are here as well, if they could come forward. And Ms. Mata said as well, who oversees that committee. And before I introduce Mike Hash and Craig Tornquist and Brian Avery to give some information, the Champions Together Committee is the overarching group that provides opportunities for our unified sports programs. And it has truly become something very special and I believe a much ingrained part of what we do at Carmel Clay Schools. And I love that we have become a leader in this, not only in the state, but throughout the country. And I think it says a lot about what our kids value. And they, they put their time where their mouth is at as well, and they do it very, very well. So I will turn it over to Mr. Hash to tell you a little bit about what this honor is here this evening.
Thank you. It's a great pleasure and honor to be here to speak with you because as Jimmy said, Carmel is one of the national leaders. It has been since day one, which started 12 years ago, that Carmel went all in and has really changed lives through the inclusion revolution and the unified movement. So to earn this banner, there are 10 components that you must meet throughout the school year, and they fall within three categories. Inclusive student leadership, whole school engagement, and unified sports. Three areas that Carmel really excels in. And Carmel, this is your second time earning this banner, and you're only one of six in the state of Indiana to have done it twice. So we applaud you. So on behalf of Special Olympics Indiana, the IHSA and Champions Together, we would like to recognize Carmel High School for the 2023-2027 National High School Banner.
Unified!
At this time, we can take a brief break if there are students and parents that wanted to go home since it is a school night, or you're also welcome to stay. Important recognitions. Tonight, we are recognizing our outgoing school board members, Katie Browning and Louise Jackson. Dr. Beresford.
Well, it's kind of a bittersweet moment for me. And for others too as well. But as we celebrate Louise and Katie, you know, I kind of look at it like a graduation. We're really happy for you that you're graduating from the board, but we're going to miss you a lot, and we kind of wish you wouldn't have to go. But we just want to thank you for your service to our students, our staff, our parents, Carmel Clay Schools, and representing the community of Carmel, who elected you to the school board and doing that in such a high exemplary fashion. It's sad for us because we're going to miss the great leadership that you've displayed over these years. Your hearts and your smarts and your decision making, your determination into making Carmel Clay Schools a special place for children to learn and grow. And you've all been able to keep that, your primary focus throughout your years of service here. While at the same time, we are happy for you. And we're glad that you've reached this milestone. And we really wish you both some rest and then also some success in your next endeavors because we know you're gonna, we know that you're movers and shakers and you're not going to slow down. You'll just be going off to different places. You've left a wonderful legacy here at Carmel Clay Schools that will last for years to come, and you'll forever be part of the Carmel Clay Schools' school board history. And, and I hope you take some time, you know, to come back every now and then and look at the things that have been built and the programs that have grown and that you seeded and planted and all the different pieces of, where your fingerprints are on this district. And I hope you take some pride in that and take some moments to really soak that in because anyone who gives four years of their life, eight years of your life, you know, in service to children and families is a hero in my book. So we're thankful to have the opportunity to work alongside of you and in the good times, also in the hard times, sometimes in the sad times. And then, of course, in the amazingly joyful, awesome times, much like tonight, where we see, you know, just the best of our kids. So now it's time for me to kind of call you down off of the dais. So I'm going to start out with Louise. Louise, come on down. You just come over here by me, I'll be good. You'll be just fine. Okay, Louise Jackson. She's completing her fourth year term on the board, and she's contributed to our school community in many, many ways. Louise saw the district through a lens of diversity, a lens of creativity, and a growth mindset. She said that in her first meeting here and, and has backed it up. She questioned us, she challenged us, she supported our student, staff, and parents and helped us grow. And those are all things that, that you have to go to the hard places to get to. And I appreciate your strength in doing that. You support our efforts to diversify our workforce through creative programming. You support the board, the board itself, with professional development so they, for their understanding and further growth on our team. One of the coolest things was that you represented the board and the district in collaboration with the Carmel Rotary Club to, to take a program that's called Leadership Connection and just took it to a whole new level. And what a positive impact it's had for Carmel Clay students. But not only that, you expanded it to other schools in different places around the town and took it to downtown and just, just expand it in a huge way with, with, you know, with really just your energy and your passion for that, for that to happen. So that one was really, really great. And connected our kids and all these kids with the leaders from all around central Indiana so they could get that experience. And that wouldn't have happened, it just wouldn't have happened without you. So we're going to miss you, but we wish you the very best in your future endeavors. And if you could just stay there for a minute, we're going to shower you with gifts in just a minute. So it's time for Katie to come down. I've always wanted to do that come on down thing. It's just like really played out well. Okay. So Katie is completing her eighth year on the board? Two terms, a two-termer. And she served as board president for two of those years. And I would got to tell you that the two years that she was the board president were probably the most challenging, worst years in Indiana history of school boards. And I say that not to be a downer, but it's a great strength, really both of you. You know, you were here for such a time as that, and, and it was pretty, pretty amazing. Katie's superpower is her ability to bring a positive, welcoming, personal connection to those she leads and interacts with. She's been a positive force in the district, even like I said, in very challenging times. She always takes the time, and you saw this over and over again throughout the entire eight years. She takes the time to show her appreciation to the students, to our staff, to our parents, and really for anyone that came across her path for their extra efforts they did to make Carmel Clay Schools special. Her approach has always been to learn first. You know, remember those first few years? Learn first, understand first, and then lead. She asks meaningful questions, is able to summarize and organize mountains of information, and then communicate it back out in an understandable way. See, the questions you ask are really beneficial to parents. You always kind of had that lens of what would a parent want to know? What do I want to know as a parent? And that was, that, that was extremely valuable for, for the folks. Communications has always been your strength in leadership. And it's a long list of contributions she's made over eight years. And actually, if you think about you guys, if you, it's kind of like dog years. So you could take that time seven, and it's like a billion years that you've been on the board. This might feel like way. But just a few things. She did all the jobs. So she, I mean Parks Department, she already, I mean, you name it. She, we have a job, she, she did it at some point in time in eight years. She penned the civility and decorum policy, created the board norms document. She's hired two superintendents. Extremely happy about the first one and the second one. And then she served as the president of board, like I said, during one of the most difficult times. Katie, thank you for your service to our students, staff, board, and community. We will miss you, but of course, we wish you the best in your future endeavors as well. So now, I'm going to see if I can switch microphones. I can check, I can switch microphones. So over here, we have presents. And I want you guys to see them first. This is yours, Louise, you're this stack, and Katie, you're on this side. So if you guys could kind of... All right. So what we have here for a gift for you is a compass. And the reason we have a compass for you is because you guys have both served in giving the district direction. And you have been the North Star to keep us on that number one guiding principle. Keep students at the center of every decision and everything we do. So every time you look at that compass, I want you to think that we thank, we are thanking you for your direction and for your true north that you've given us for the years that you've served. Okay? And also, you're getting, from Mr. Inskeep, who we just saw, an all-sports pass for the rest of your life. You can go to anything you want to. You get, you're getting the complimentary Carmel Clay Schools certificate that Katie made us put the logo on. So it's like a bigger deal. I mean, it looks good. Now, underneath here is probably the most valuable stuff, and that is students wrote notes and thanking you all for all that you've done. And in Mrs. Rohr's class, they're kind of like overachievers. They like took their picture and put like a Santa hat on them. And I mean, they really did it upright. So there you, there you go. And so you'll read through those, and they are precious. So, so that's the gifts we've showered you with. And we have one other thing we want you to do, and that is, is to watch a video that we've been, we've prepared just to highlight some of the things that happened while you were in leadership here at Carmel Clay Schools. So if you want to go, and I wanted to get you in front of the big screen so you could watch it. And let's crank it up.
Clay Middle School would like to say, thank you, Mrs. Browning, for everything you've done for Carmel Clay Schools. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson, for supporting our students and staff at Carmel Clay Schools.
Thank you for your thoughtful leadership.
I want to thank each of you for your service to our district and to our community during your years on our school board. In particular, I want to express appreciation for your support in the area of advancing wellness and mental health supports for our students and staff.
Thank you for your commitment to safety.
Thank you for your attentive recruitment and hiring.
Curry Choice thanks you for all of your support, Katie and Louise.
Thank you for being so awesome.
We'll miss you.
Thank you for being student-centered.
And now it's your turn to, to take the podium and just say a few words. Louise, you are first up, and try to keep it under an hour if you could.
Colleen, are you going to turn on the lights? Public comment. Yeah, so I want to start by saying thank you to you all. Thank you to the parents, thank you to educators and administrators and board members. When I ran for school board, I didn't run for school board because I wanted my name to be known or to become popular or to become rich, as most people think. I really wanted to support my students in Carmel Clay Schools, my two children. And I wanted families to feel like they had a, a voice that would represent them. And I, I thought it was an opportunity to, to live out my values. My values are impact, courage, and connection. And so whenever I would share a thought, a question, challenge the team, I always wanted to make you feel as though I was listening to you and also, at many times, challenging you to become the best version of whatever it is, you know, either you could be or the schools or situation could be for, for students. So I always want to leave something better than what I found it, and that helps me rest at night. I also want to say thank you to my mom. She is for sure the reason why I have any grace when people are yelling at me in emails or threatening to come to my house because they're angry about a decision. She's also the reason I have any grace for the friends that I've lost because I've taken this position or just the moments where I just didn't know what to do and had to show my own self-grace. So thank you so much, Mom. You deserve applause there. And then I just want to acknowledge some of these awesome administrators that I've worked alongside. And this is in no particular order. Amy Dudley, thanks for sitting down with me and talking to me about how we access or how we assess our educators, how learning frameworks are created. It helped me be a better professor and mom. I'm excited about how you'll continue to work to ensure those who are educating our students know how to be successful. Roger, nobody knows the numbers like you, I'm convinced of that. I'm still most impressed with how you've navigated our rainy day fund, especially during COVID and over the last two years post-COVID. Despite your acknowledged deficit with designing visually engaging PowerPoint slides, you don't disappoint with your financial you don't disappoint with your financial acumen and ensuring our district remains financially strong and stable. And so I look forward to seeing how you cascade your knowledge into those coming after you. And thank you for your impeccable style in the eyewear area. Dr. O'Stryke, thanks for sharing your recruiting process with me. And through your partnership with our Equity Inclusion Officer, Terry, the vision that you all have created to ensure our staff has the highest level of competence in the country and your intentional efforts to ensure that the diversity in our staff reflects the diversity in the community is appreciated. I hope to continue to see your commitment in this area and in the role of superintendent in the upcoming year. Dr. Beresford, thank you for welcoming me into so many rooms and conversations as a parent and as your boss. Never forget it. I have found that you are a very great representation of grace in the midst of conflict. And I have channeled that. I think I'm better at navigating conflict because of your steadiness being represented for me. Also, I hope you know that you will be missed as you transition onto your next role. And most importantly, tell your lovely wife I have said thank you for her service. David, where are you? Okay, David. David, okay, you can hear me. Thank you for working to consistently keep us ahead of the curve in the area of safety. Your work behind the scenes is deeply appreciated. I didn't forget about it. I pray about it often. I pray about you as a leader because I think you are an awesome leader. Probably don't say it to you, but I do. And I just want you to know that your steadiness in this very unsteady climate that we navigate every day as students and educators is deeply appreciated. To those school board members that are coming, you have some big shoes to fill, but I know you'll do well. And I'll be keeping an eye on you. And anytime I have questions, I'll go ahead and shoot that board email, a note. And to Kristin, Jennifer, and Greg, I wish you much continued success, grace, and you will all be in my prayers. Thank you.
In just a few short weeks, I will be celebrating a milestone birthday. I'm turning 40. I find myself reflecting on how deeply my 30s have shaped me. And without question, serving on the Carmel Clay School Board has been, oh my gosh, Katie, get it together, you're on the first paragraph, has been one of the most transformational experiences of my life. It's been more than a position or a title, and it's been a journey, one that has challenged me, stretched me, and left me profoundly changed. It was 2016, and I thought that running for a small public office might be fun. I was new to the area, I didn't know many people, and I figured it would be a good way to get involved. At the time, I was a stay-at-home mom who substitute taught a couple days a week. I knew I wouldn't win, but I was crazy enough to embrace the challenge anyway. My daughter was in third grade, she will be a senior next year, and my son had just started kindergarten and he will be going to high school. While most people would have joined the PTO, I somehow decided that running for school board was a good idea. I was young, optimistic, and if I'm being completely honest, completely blissfully unaware of what I was getting myself into. But being naive gave me courage. It allowed me to take a chance, and what a chance this was. This role has taken me to places I've never imagined. It has lifted me to moments of triumph I will never forget and pulled me through crazy moments that I knew I now can overcome. But through it all, it's been one of the most meaningful and humbling experiences of my life. As I stand here tonight completing two terms, I'm overwhelmed with gratitude. I'm grateful for the chance to have served, for the lessons I've learned, and for the people I've met along the way. So if you'll indulge me, I too would like to take a moment to express my sincere thanks to the many people who've made this journey possible. To my community, thank you for believing in little old me. Thank you for trusting me to represent you, advocate you, and make decisions that shape the lives of our children. Your faith in me has been humbling and inspiring. To the parents who tirelessly advocate for their children in public education, you are the backbone of this community. Your voices, your passion, and your relentless pursuit of what is best for our students are what makes Carmel Clay Schools exceptional. To the teachers, principals, and support staff, you are the heart of this district. You show up every day, not just to teach, but to inspire, guide, and nurture our children. And your dedication is nothing short of heroic. To the incredible staff at ESC, thank you for being that steady foundation behind all that we do. Your patience, flexibility, and endless hours of work don't go unnoticed. To my colleagues, Emily, your ability to keep us informed, steady, and sometimes stay out of trouble is a gift. Colleen, your guiding light is always one step ahead and ready to lend a hand. Roger, your stewardship has ensured the stability of this district, and your work will impact generations of students to come. Dr. Dudley, your grace and calm under pressure have been a model of leadership. Thank you all. Dr. O'Stryke, your boundless energy and passion for Carmel Clay Schools are nothing short of contagious. We are in the best possible hands for you as a superintendent. And to Dr. Beresford, from the moment I met you, I knew you were a leader that this district desperately needed. Your heart for education and your belief in the people around you have been a source of healing and hope for this community. Thank you for inspiring me to lead with the same grace and conviction. It has been an absolute honor. To Kristin, Jenny, and Greg, the district is in great hands because of you. Kristin, your steady leadership as president this past year has been nothing short of inspiring. And I know that the district and the board are in good hands. And I do not doubt that Carmel Clay Schools will continue to excel with our new members. To my friends, thank you for knowing me so well. For those nights filled with laughter and the moments of escape, and yes, maybe one, two glasses of wine, they were what I needed the most. You have been my anchor through the toughest of times. To my parents, you raised me to believe in the power of kindness, hard work, community, and you taught me to stand up for what I believed in, to push through challenges and to give back whatever I could. I wouldn't be here without you. To my sister, Amy, since our parents raised us to seek adventures and never to fear to take a chance, and that spirit has led us on our own incredible journeys. I think back when I would force you to play school with me. And honestly, I can't remember, but it wouldn't surprise me if I made you sit through a mock meeting where I banged a gavel and called us to order. Thank you for putting up with me back then and for continuing to put up with me now. We've done some pretty amazing things, haven't we? I couldn't ask for a better sister. To my children, Abigail and Atticus, Abigail, you are everything I could ever hope for. You are strong, you are ambitious, and you are fearless. You will change this world in ways that I can't even begin to imagine. Atticus, your heart is as big as the sky. You see the good in people and remind me every day what love and empathy matter most. And finally, to my husband, Jeff, this journey has been as much yours as it has been mine. You have seen me at my best and my worst, and you've stood by me through it all. You've listened when I needed to vent, comforted me when I cried, and celebrated me when I succeeded. This would not have been possible without you, and I'm so incredibly grateful for your love and support. As I prepare to step away from this role, I do so with a heart that is so incredibly full. Serving on Carmel Clay School Board has been one of the greatest honors of my life. Thank you to all of you who have been a part of this journey. It's been extraordinary, and I can't wait to see what I do next. Thanks.
It's been real, but we're going to bounce.
We'll take another short break. We have one public speaker signed up this evening, and that is in our typical group one, which is CCS students, CCS parents, guardians, employees, and Carmel residents. And as a reminder, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name, group affiliation, if applicable. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the board. No person may address or question individual board members. The school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during public comment, but will take them under advisement. Our speaker this evening is Cassie Jackson.
Okay, good evening. My name is Cassie Jackson. I'm a parent of twins in the Carmel Clay School System. Next year, I'll have a kindergartner. Tonight, I came to speak to the board about preventative safety measures for the Carmel Clay School District as it relates to Mr. Micah Beckwith, who is our Indiana Lieutenant Governor-elect. Some of you may be aware that Mr. Beckwith will be speaking at Westfield High School this upcoming Friday, December 20th. And then he's no longer welcome in that school district, into any of their schools. Myself and thousands of other local Hamilton County community members, comprised of parents, teachers, administrators, or otherwise, have been in contact with that superintendent, Mr. Kazer, with concern that Mr. Beckwith would be allowed into any other public school. That didn't make... You'll get what I'm saying. Mr. Beckwith has personally promised, despite his duties not involving education in the state of Indiana, to enter schools so that he can weed out the bad apple teachers. Those are his words. What he means by that is he intends to target teachers and administrators who are equitable or in his terms, woke. Mr. Beckwith has also promised to continue to use hate speech in his rhetoric. He has stated that it is not discriminatory at all to discriminate against LGBTQIA+ community Jews or liberals, and that in fact, the Bible allows him to perpetuate these views. Calls personal political candidates and activists who do not align with his views Jezebel spirits and demons, and then states explicitly to his church body and anyone who will listen that demons must be killed. He has recently commended a father in the Westfield School District who posted a picture online of a child in the girls restroom, and he condemned the superintendent for calling that parent and then telling him that he was putting that child's life in danger. Mr. Beckwith also doxes and has doxed the superintendent of Westfield. And that's not just posting bad things about people, that is releasing publicly people's information. And then his followers will start doxing, and people will receive hate mail and threats to both themselves, their jobs, and their family's safety. He's promised to dox teachers, administrators, and parents in the local community and in the state if they don't align with his political ideals. So that might be as basic as him like walking into a school and seeing a rainbow on a door and taking a photo of that teacher's name and having people reach out to that teacher. He has personal history within Noblesville School District. I advise you, please, to reach out to that legal team. And it does involve a child, I'm not going to go into that story. But it's ongoing. As I said previously, this is simply a preventative message and request for the Carmel Clay School Board to refuse any future requests that Mr. Beckwith may make to enter any of the public school properties in the Carmel Clay School District. I stand with thousands of Hoosiers at the moment who are committed to making sure that all public school systems across the state are addressed, either at their board meetings or with letters to the superintendent should he try to go to their schools in the future. I hope that you stand in solidarity with us in refusing to allow hate speech in politics where they should not be, which is in our public schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Up next on our agenda is consent. And tonight, our consent agenda includes a personnel report, claims, payroll, gift applications, the November 11th workshop session minutes, and the November 25th regular session minutes. As a reminder, that our consent part of our meeting agenda is the designated section where we group routine items together. It's our business part of our meeting, and so we group all of those together to approve them in a more of a timely manner. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items? Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. So that might be as basic as him, like, walking into a school and seeing a rainbow on a door and taking a photo of that teacher's name and having people reach out to that teacher. He has personal history within Noblesville School District. I advise you, please, to reach out to that legal team, and it does involve a child, I'm not gonna go into that story, but it's ongoing. As I said previously, this is simply a preventative message and request for the Carmel Clay School Board to refuse any future requests that Mr. Beckwith may make to enter any of the public school properties in the Carmel Clay School District. I stand with thousands of Hoosiers at the moment who are committed to making sure that all public school systems across the state are addressed either at their board meetings or with letters to the superintendent should he go to their -- try to go to their schools in the future. I hope that you stand in solidarity with us in refusing to allow hate speech in politics where they should not be, which is in our public schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you for your time. Up next on our agenda is consent, and tonight, our consent agenda includes a personnel report, claims, payroll, gift applications, the November 11th workshop session minutes, and the November 25th regular session minutes. As a reminder, that our consent part of our meeting agenda is the designated section where we group routine items together. It's our business part of our meeting, and so we group all of those together to approve them in a more of a timely manner. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items? Thank you, Greg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, I need a motion to suspend the regular session board meeting and open a public hearing regarding the additional appropriation of 1.3 million for the education fund, $200,000 for the operating referendum, and $600,000 for the safety referendum. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a second? Thank you, Greg. All in favor of suspending?
Aye.
Aye. Per Board Policy 0167.3, when a public hearing is required by federal or state statute, the same rules followed during public comment apply during a public hearing with the following exceptions: advanced registration is not required, and speakers must speak on the topic of the public hearing. Before speaking, participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation. Participants, as with public comment, will have three minutes to speak. Comments may not reference specific corporation employees, patrons, or students. Comments shall be directed to the board, and no person may address or question individual board members. In addition, the school board will not act on or respond to questions or comments made during the public hearing, but will take them under advisement. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments first?
Excuse me, yes, just briefly, our 24 budget, as the board is aware, we start putting that together in the late spring of 2023 in this case, and so it's now almost, you know, 18 months later, but so during that time, there's been several things that have happened this time around. One, we had had declining enrollment right after COVID, and so we were, I'll say, very conservative in terms of what we assumed our enrollment was going to be, because that drives our funding, you know, is a major driver in the amount of funding. So we assumed over the two years a decline of about 140 students, and we actually gained about 50, so that's about 200 students swing. And so a large part of this additional appropriation provides for the recognition that we, because of that change in enrollment and the actual as compared to what was assumed when the budget was built, we -- that required the employment of, you know, additional teachers, as you might imagine, for a couple hundred more students. That was part of it, but not all of it. Secondly, in the second year of -- because our budget is built on two school years, really, it's -- so this reflects '23, '24, the last half of that school year, and then '24, '25, so the first half of this school year. And so for the second year, we had really had to estimate what our health insurance, for example, was going to increase, and so we assumed 5%. It actually went up 8%, which is, by the way, the highest it's been in 13 -- highest increase, largest increase in about 13 years. But our health insurance expenses are about $25 million, so three additional percent, you can kind of do the math and see that that had a meaningful impact in terms of additional appropriation. And another area was spatial education, for example. I believe our funding, for example, in that area increased about $400 and some thousand dollars, and of course, that reflects, you know, additional students, additional programming, and so forth. And so, but to put this in perspective, and then we had previously noted that in the safety referendum, we received billing from Ascension Hospital, for example, for our student therapy program, and so the timing of when we received those payments or those invoices affected the amount of appropriation. Keep in mind that appropriation is just a term that gives us authority to spend the money that we already have, so this -- we actually increased well over about $1.8 million of additional revenue as compared to what we built the budget on. So this is appropriating not all of that, but a significant part of it, and it's likely to be more than we need because we need to be able to be sure we have sufficient authority to pay invoices and so forth as we get to the end of the year. And so while this is, you know, a meaningful amount of money, to put in context, these budgets are about $140 million, so it's about 1%, and not to minimize that, but we absolutely have -- so it's additional expense, but we also have additional revenue that more than covers what the additional expense is. So it's -- this isn't deficit spending or creating any kind of a financial problem. So with that, that's the explanation, and then, as you noted, this would be the opportunity for any members of the public that would like to comment.
Yes, as Mr. McMichael was saying, now is the time for any members of the public to comment, so I will offer some time and opportunity to make comments regarding these additional appropriations. Since there are no comments from the members of the public, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? Thank you, Greg. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will now resume our regular board meeting. Next on our agenda are our action items, and our first action item is the 2024-2025 Legislative Letter. Dr. Bearsford, would you like to comment?
Just briefly, I did receive a whole lot of feedback, got a little bit of feedback from Mr. Brown and from you, President Koke, and submitted some minor tweaks to that based off of those suggestions, and I think we're in a good place to have a finalized product.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 CCS Legislative Letter?
So moved.
Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a second? Thank you, Greg. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is the adoption of the Resolution of Additional Appropriation. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is to actually -- it's required that the board adopt a resolution so that ultimately the state will approve this additional appropriation, and they're the ultimate authority in giving us authority to -- they confirm that we have sufficient revenue to back up the appropriation.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the Resolution of Additional Appropriation?
So moved.
Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussion?
Just comments. I had asked some questions over the last few weeks about this adoption process, and it's a very routine process, I would think, that we see with school districts, and I'm still learning these nuances, and I appreciate Roger's been very helpful in bringing me up to speed on these things, and it is not a very small amount, I mean, it is a small amount, as you stated, so it's assuring to see that we're budgeting so tightly and that we're still under the amounts that we could appropriate. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes.
Yeah. So I had some questions, and you went through all the answers publicly there, so I appreciate that, and that was the end of my comment.
Great, thank you, Mr. Brown. We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our next action item is the bid award, the Carmel Clay Schools 2025 Landscape Improvements. Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. This is a renovation and a replacement of landscaping at five elementary schools. It was part of our planning and -- or one of our bond sales, and it's -- you might remember that these schools also received a number of improvements outside, starting with pavement, for example. We rehabbed the parking lot and the other pavement on these schools. This is kind of the second big piece, and we'll finish this up this spring.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the bid award for the Carmel Clay Schools 2025 Landscape Improvements?
So moved.
Thank you, Greg. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
This is the lowest of three bids?
It is.
Okay.
And the only thing I was going to comment on is that I know several of us, of board members, have toured some of the schools that were needing work, and so we've kind of seen that there needs to be some updating and some things done, and we've seen -- we had seen the pavement projects prior to them being done, so we have worked on doing our due diligence to know kind of what is going on and what needs updated. We will now take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have some change orders. We have several change orders, in fact, and so may I have a motion to approve the change orders as a group rather than order by order? So this would be item 6.4, change orders for the Cherry Tree Elementary renovations; 6.5, change orders for the West Clay Elementary interior renovations; 6.6, change orders for the Carmel High School Greyhound Activity Center; 6.7, change orders for the Carmel High School Polytech addition; 6.8, our change orders for the Carmel High School Nautatorium addition and existing nautatorium renovations; and 6.9, change orders for the Carmel High School Freshmen Center interior renovations. And again, taking a motion to approve these as a group doesn't mean that we still can't discuss each of these, and we will have Mr. McMichael explain each. So may I have a motion to approve these as a group? Thank you, Jennifer. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. And then any discussion on this, on voting on them as a group or grouping them together? All right, seeing none, we will all take a vote. So what we're voting on is in favor of taking those items 6.4 through 6.9 on the agenda and grouping them together. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So now, Mr. McMichael, can you provide some information on those change orders 6.4 through 6.9?
I can. So these change orders impact four different projects, including the nautatorium, the freshman center, Polytech project, and then Carmel Elementary -- or Cherry Tree Elementary School, and they total about a little over $200,000, and the projects themselves are a little over $100 million. So, you know, most of our world's $200,000 is a meaningful amount, but it's not a large amount relative to the size and scope of the project. Most of these, the details of the change orders, as you can see in your report, most of them were either unforeseen conditions, or in the case of Cherry Tree, for example, the city came after the bids were received and determined that we needed to replace the, what's called, the grease interceptor. It has part of the kitchen system and so forth, but that's $50,000. And so that's an example of something that we replaced. At the Polytech project, we had -- one of the change orders has to do with soil testing, and as a result of the testing, we found the soil had to be stabilized in order to do that project, and there was another one, I believe, at the same location that had to do with a water line that was -- feeds a sprinkler system, and we had a water line, but as we got into the project, more detail was determined that it didn't have sufficient pressure or something like that. And so those are a couple of examples of some of the larger amounts within that $200,000.
Thank you very much for that explanation. May I have a motion to approve action items 6.4 through 6.9?
Do we get a chance to comment?
Yes, and then we will have a discussion right after this.
Okay.
Yes. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Greg. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. And now discussion.
Thanks. I'm still trying to get my head around some of the budgeting and actions that we go through in school districts, and I know it's different in a number of regards than the commercial where I've come from. One thing I'm trying to understand is these, all these change orders are for completed tasks, and I understand when, as we put together budgets for projects, we always include contingency for these things that we can't think of everything, and you mentioned a good example there of the grease interceptor that, I think, the Carmels, the City of Carmel said that we need to replace it, we can't reuse it, so that's a good example of, you know, we thought we could reuse it, and we didn't, but there are some other items that are more, there are additions to scope of the original project. So we're, what we're noticing near the end of these projects is that we have some contingency budget still remaining, and there's been some decisions to increase the scope, so to speak. One was like the receptionist desk at the freshman center, I think it was, and I'm wondering if it would be a better practice if those things that were scope increases would be better handled, approving those before the projects were worked on. Certainly, these other tasks where we have to, you know, we, that's exactly what contingency's for, is the unplanned task, but the ones that are planned, I would feel more comfortable if we brought those to the board beforehand and approved them. It just seemed like it'd be in a more proper order, and I just wanted to get comments, the other board members and anyone else, what you think about that.
I mean, we can discuss it as a board, but my concern would be that that's not necessarily how construction projects work. So in the limited scope that I have under construction, I've noticed that you can plan something, and maybe then the hallway isn't the right size, and then practicality is you can't, you're not gonna halt a project, you have to finish it, and sometimes, even through the breastlaid plans, one realizes that there are things that need to be changed. So, I mean, Roger certainly can let us know if I'm understanding it incorrectly, but I would say that we have to finish the project because we have 16,000 kids that need to go through those schools. So I think rather than maybe our own opinions, we would want to hear from somebody who understands the process and is in, is involved in the scope of what's going on, because we can conjecture for a long time.
I think that was going to be my comment. I was going to defer to Mr. McMichael as the school finance expert.
Well, thank you. I would note that the items that you described that I'll classify as unforeseen, you're exactly right. This nautatorium project, for example, you know, we've had, I think they told me there were maybe 70 or 80 contract workers working on this project, laying tile and so forth, so the practical, you know, you would not want to shut down a project until all these guys go home while you're getting board approval, and at the very, even if you call emergency meetings, you have to advertise, as you know, to have a meeting, and but what I want to emphasize the most, and I would take exception to what Greg said as far as two things, one is, is we do not increase the scope of a project because we have money left over. Those are things that we, you would see as an alternate, for example. That's an example that if we have sufficient funds from the base project and can identify them, we often would include those as an alternative in the event that we do have sufficient funding. So that's not exactly increasing the scope, it's just saying if we have sufficient funds for this project, this would be something we would add. In most cases, change orders that we're discussing are not increasing the scope. They're things that are identified as very large projects that we think would be better or just required in some cases. If we were doing a major change to the scope of the project, and I'm talking about, again, these projects are $100 million, if we were proposing to do something that was, you know, another million or a million and a half dollars, we absolutely would discuss it and bring it to the school board before we would, you know, we certainly wouldn't do that after the fact. But most change orders, and I should also note that under Indiana law, we routinely do projects that are under 300, the limit is $300,000 that we can do administratively without board, you know, specific board approval, and I don't mean that we have $300 projects every day, but we do have occasion to have, you know, projects that are much larger than the sum total of these, this change order of $200,000, because the 300 is per project, not a whole scope of things. And so, again, trying to wrap your arms around that and put it in the context of the amount of money that these projects are costing, and then, as you noted, in relationship to keeping the, trying to keep the project on schedule. I honestly am not aware of any I honestly am not aware of any, any approach to stopping a project to address and get prior approval for the change orders that this board has seen.
You know, again, I was, you know, separating out, Jennifer, what you talked about, items that are surprises, that are, we're not really changing the scope, we just realized you took a wall down and you found out, oh, there's a problem here, we have to deal with. That's exactly, to me, what contingency is for and I have no problem with those kinds of things. But, you know, like the reception desk, and that's why I try to separate it and have some discussion on it.
Can I, excuse me, if I could explain the receptionist desk, as you've mentioned it twice. So I think that's a good example. The reception desk is, we started into the project and started getting actually involved in the work, it actually had termites that weren't obvious when we started, but it was, it was necessary, we felt, to change that desk out. We didn't, it's not an expansion of the scope. It was not assumed in the project because we didn't realize it would be appropriate to, and necessary, we think, to replace it. So it's, again, it's not, I want to emphasize, because we are, you know, on public record and so forth, we do not expand the scope of our project because we have money left over and we don't spend it just because we have it. Now, having said that, with over 300, 3 million square feet of space in any building, there's usually something that we could benefit from in terms of improving it and so forth. And, but we don't, we don't operate by kind of seeing how much money we can spend or spending it because we have it. The earlier example with the additional appropriation, we receive more revenue than that additional appropriation and we won't likely use all of, all that appropriation. So it's important to understand that, and I would not want to give this public an impression that we spend taxpayer dollars just because they gave it to us, because we don't.
Could I ask, just because this is not my wheelhouse, just trying to understand what expanding the scope of a project would be? An example, you don't have to, it doesn't have to be a specific example, just in general, what would that mean?
If we were, if we were doing an addition to a school and we, you know, we planned it for 10 classrooms and for whatever our reason, we decided we would like to build 15 classrooms or 13 classrooms, that's not something that's, you know, that we could, we would know that in far enough in advance that, that we would, we would be able to bring that to the board's attention without disrupting, you know, it being in kind of the middle of the project. So that might be an example, but where it's practical and, again, I don't mean to minimize the money, but where it's practical and a meaningful amount of money that truly changes what the board had previously approved. For example, you approved a $55 million nautatorium and, but it needed $12,000 worth of change orders this evening. And so we wouldn't find that meaningful to bring back, whether it was, whether it was unforeseen or not. When you're there and see, as things are being built and you see something and it says, we did, nobody picked this up, including our architects and so forth, but now that we're here, we think we ought to, you know, spend that $12,000, but we don't want to stop the project in order to get approval to do it.
And Roger, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the long run, if you do make the correction as it comes up, that's a really more efficient use of money rather than it would be to go ahead and build it and then go back and tear it up and to fix it and then fix it again. So some of that sequencing has to do with, you know, you know, where you are at that moment in time and this is a, you know, a good efficient way to get this fixed with the funds that we have available.
I mean, if we were trying to avoid change orders, as you, you know, maybe describe like that, the reason you have a change order is because the contractor has a contract and we, and neither party can change it without a formal process. And so, as with any contract, and so there has to be agreement to do that. And so that's what you're doing. If we were, really probably all this work and all these change orders, if they were independent of a, of a construction project, we would have done them as a, as a part of the annual, you know, several million dollars we spend maintaining our buildings every year. And that grease trap, for example, it would be something that we wouldn't be happy about it because we didn't, you know, we did, it came up maybe, you know, and it was, sometimes in this case, it's, it's another entity that's telling us what we have to do. And it's not that it's not appropriate, I'm just saying that, that we don't get a vote in the, in the matter at that point. And so we would just replace that. And you, if you scrutinize claims, you might, you would see something on a claims list when we paid the contractor, but that would be your involvement as a school board.
Yeah, this, this helps understand, like I didn't know the desk had termite damage. I'm looking at, you know, a couple sentences and I'm trying to be, you know, fiscally responsible to make sure that we know that, you know, that we're not doing things that we shouldn't be doing. And I have not seen, I'm not insinuating that, I'm just saying as a practice. It just, it, I'm questioning if it always makes sense to approve things after they've been done, when we have, a couple of points I wanted to make. One is, we have assembled the, all we need is a quorum of three on the board to get together. And we've, I've seen us do that before where we can, within a couple of days, we can do that. So that shouldn't be much of an issue because we have a small board.
I take exception to that though, Greg, it is an issue. If you're on a construction project and you have 70 or 100 contract employees working, they don't, you know, telling them they have to stop whatever they're doing, some or all of them, so that we can have a, three or four days later, have a board approve something that quite honestly, I'd have pretty high confidence that you would approve, or we wouldn't be recommending it in the first place.
We also have to, ahead of time, note that we will be having a meeting, even if it's kind of an emergency type meeting, we have to let the public know ahead of times.
Right. Yeah, let me, let me give another point. I think it'll, it'll frame it better where I'm coming from. We had one a couple of months ago or so where we added a classroom, I think, a special ed classroom at an elementary school. We had funding in a middle school project and the decision was, and I realized times of the essence that we wanted to get this, this other building built before summer was over so that it can be used. So that was like 165,000 or some number like that, but that's probably a better example than, than a desk with termites. Like I said, I could see it had termites, but that's the kind of thing, I'm just saying that, you know, that, that's a change in scope. I'm not sure you could, we could describe any which way, but we took money from one approved project, put it on a whole different school. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't have done that, I would have certainly supported it. But that was, you know, that was maybe a better example of, maybe in that case, it would make better sense to have the board get together, take a few days and polls, I'm not sure.
I don't think it's a much better example, Greg, and I'll tell you why. Using that as the example, again, it was a hundred and some thousand dollars. What we did was we chose to use a, well, let me back up. We needed the rooms because late in the, in the spring and in the summer, we recognized based on, on parents coming and enrolling their children, that we didn't have any place to put them in August. And so we didn't frankly have time to go through the process you're describing. And had we chosen to use our operation funds, we would have done that project and as I noted earlier, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have been a change order. But in this case, we expedited that project by using a contractor that's already on an unrelated project, so it certainly didn't expand the scope of that project. And by the way, when you approve bonds, there's a part at the bottom that allows for what we're doing or we wouldn't be doing it. And so we, we identify very specifically the major projects that we're doing, but we also note that this, these bonds may be for other needs within the entire school corporation. So that's what enables us to do it. So in that example, we, we knew we had sufficient funds in the bond issue. And so it became partially a matter of, do you want to use bond funds or do you want to use operational funds? They're both coming from everybody, all of it comes from taxpayers. And, and, but be driven at least by, primarily, I'd say, by, by a timing issue and the need and the desire to have, have those classrooms ready in August. That's a very short timeframe to, particularly in today's economy. You know, we don't have contractors, when you call them up, they're just, can't wait to come and do your project. So it was, in that, that was a project that we, we utilized the bond funds to expedite the project primarily. Because again, we could have used operational funds and been well under any limit that, we do get quotes, by the way, if it's up at $300,000, but it's not a formal bidding process. So we, it's, it can be expedited because we're not doing legal advertising and so forth.
And I think this is something that the board could delve into, you know, when we have our new members sworn in and, and, you know, kind of get into some of the specifics of how we're moving forward in the new year.
That's probably a good idea. I, you know, again, I'm not at all indicating that I'm seeing something that I wouldn't approve. Everything I've seen, I've approved and it's, I have, you know, trust that good decisions are being made. It just, it just seems, I ask myself, what am I doing approving this expenditure when it was already expended? It seems backwards and maybe there's something we ought to look at and maybe there's some kind of a notification earlier that, hey, by the way, this is, we're going to do this and here's why and.
I think, I think just as we have two new board members coming on, we can do a little more board member education. I think we can always, I'm never going to fully understand, you know, school financing, it's very complicated, as you have noted. And I think we could, that could be part of our ongoing education and training was to understand more of this.
Might be helpful if you, I would recommend that you look at this, not as approving after the fact, but that it's, it's a required part of a process to, to, you're approving the, the change of the contract that you have with, with, you know, this particular contractors, really the way I'm seeing it. And, and in the process thus far as you're entrusting your administration to, to up within, to some level of reasonableness, to act on behalf of the school board as we do routinely. And, and not only this, but there's, as you can imagine, there's any number of decisions and actions that, that you pay us to make those decisions. And so I look at it a little bit differently than, than approving like after the fact. I appreciate that if you look at it that way, you feel like, well, what's the point? It's already done. And, but again, it's, it's more a matter of that, it's a requirement in order to, to change the contract that you first, you know, agreed on, contractor agreed to do a project based on the specifications, you agreed to pay him that much and now something's changed that either causes the contract to go up or down. And that's what we're doing.
I appreciate you also mentioning that there are checks and balances already in place, both through state statute and through the language in the bonds, and that these are routine decisions that are made so that we can do our normal course of business. So thank you, Roger.
All right, thank you, everyone. We will now take a vote. All in favor of approving items 6.4, 6.5, 6.6, 6.7, 6.8, and 6.9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next on our agenda is reports, and we will start with the student data report with Dr. Dudley.
Thank you. It's really loud. Yeah, they are, they are. Thanks. So this evening, my report is on parent teacher conferences. And in the elementary school, we do have parent teacher conferences each year in November. This past year, our parent teacher conferences were in November 7th and 8th. And the way we have our parent teachers conferences is we have our students come for a half day on that Thursday. So on November 7th, they come for a half day of school and we dismiss early. And then the teachers stay, they start conferences that afternoon and go into the evening. And then the students are not in school on that Friday. And so we have parent teacher conferences on that Friday. So this allows parents to have some flexibility in scheduling their conferences because we have morning, afternoon, and evening appointments for the parents to come in to meet with their child's teacher. And we have a great scheduling system that allows you to schedule your conferences if you have multiple students, they can schedule them back to back with their different teachers. We, our technology department supports that scheduling system and it allows us to be able to schedule those conferences back to back and also to schedule conferences. For example, let's say your child has a classroom, a homeroom teacher, and then also maybe has a special education teacher where they can schedule those conferences together in that scheduling piece. And I am excited to report that we had absolutely excellent attendance in our parent teacher conferences overall. We had 97% overall attendance rate for all of our schools in the parent teacher conferences, which is when, you know, I talked to my colleagues in other districts across Hamilton County and even across the state, they're like, you're kidding me, you have that attendance? That is fabulous. And that just goes to support, we have fabulous parents that are so very supportive of our teachers and their students in the classrooms. And so we're excited that we have that. So as this breaks down, you can see our overall attendance level was very good and as you might expect, kindergarten and first grade, the attendance level is just a smidge higher at 98% and then a smidge lower in the fifth grade at 96%, where sometimes I feel like you have, they've been in school, they're good, they're good to go. But again, we cannot say enough about the fabulous attendance that we have for our students. And then this is how it's broken out with our schools. Obviously, we want to have 100%. We want to make sure that we are communicating with all of our parents. And so for some of our parents that were not able to come to a parent teacher conference, we made sure that we reached out several times to get our, help our parents to get scheduled. But for various reasons, they might have been scheduled and they maybe they could not come to the conference because unforeseen sickness or what have you. We want to make sure that we're still communicating. And so when we either did, could not get them scheduled or when parents maybe had to cancel their conference, we still wanted to make sure that we reached out and communicated important information about their child and had the opportunity for parents to ask any questions that they might have. So we would send home very specific information about their child's, how the child was doing at this point in time in November. We've been in school for about 12 weeks now. And so they had some information and also have that opportunity to ask any questions for our parents that were not able to make it. But as you can see, some of our schools are almost at 100% like that. West Clay, 99%. That was like, really more like 99.7% of our families. So we're excited to say that we have great support for those conferences and this is a practice that we're excited that we were able to bring back a few years ago and that we want to continue to offer for our families.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment as a parent, it was really easy to schedule. I clicked on the link in my email and then another reminder email was sent probably a week or so later reminding me, or everybody that hadn't signed up, and I got a reminder that I had my meeting. And it's just really nice to be in the classroom and you get, most of the teachers, the three years that we've been doing, we get physical work that my child has done and a report on, in all the areas of how they're doing. So I, it's, I really appreciated being able to attend.
Great.
I know that this was one thing that we received a lot of comments over, over the years, that we had to discontinue it, discontinue these during the pandemic. And it's so wonderful that we're able to bring that back because it does, you can see through the involvement that people really relish that time of seeing their children's success. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree that having that collaboration between the parent and the teacher for that one student is, is essential. And I think that's probably one of the, if not the most key reason we do so well in this district is that family, parent involvement with the teacher. And I think it's, it's wonderful to see that kind of a participation rate. The one question I have would be, so we don't do this at the middle school and high school levels, could you comment on that?
No, we, we do not have parent teacher conferences at the middle school or at the high school. As you know, one of the pieces is the logistics of it, of having, you know, at the middle school, they have several different teachers and also at the high school. One thing we do at the middle school is in our teaming, we don't have conferences with all parents, but we all certainly do have conferences where we bring in, when a parent requests that, and they can meet with their entire team, which are their core teachers. So we, we have those opportunities. At the middle school, we also, you know, share information on an ongoing basis and we have quarterly reports for our families at the elementary. At the elementary school, the parent-teacher conference, that's the first report that they receive on their child's academic success is happening in the classroom. So we have different types of reporting. And at the high school, again, we have different types of reporting there. But we don't offer parent-teacher conferences for all students. But anytime a parent asks for those conferences, or sometimes the teacher may request that, we have those conferences.
And I can comment on that for the middle school. When I, the middle schools offer like parent-teacher nights at the back, early in the school year, where you learn about the curriculum and you meet your, you specifically go to your child's team at the middle school level. And they made sure to identify who was the lead teacher of that team and, you know, emailing them that anytime we needed a meeting or a sit-down. And I know I've received emails from my child's teacher to say, hey, you know, where we can help, areas where we can be helping at home. So I've, it's been really that, that clear identification has really helped to know who I needed to reach out to.
We had a incident where we wanted to request a team meeting for our child. And so we sat down with, we had met everybody during parent night, parent-teacher night. But then we went in and sat down and had the whole team commenting on behaviors that have been seen, successes, things that we can do at home to help more. And they said, reach out at any time and we can do it again. So you, and I found that out from Kristen. She said, is, you know, you're allowed to ask for as many of those meetings as possible, as you want to. So we did it and it was really collaborative. And we got a lot of good information on how we could help at home. And then the team also came up with ways that they could help in the school. So with an agenda book and it would be, you know, just good coping skills. And so it is very informative, but it's not really practical to do that in the same way because they have so many teachers.
Okay, so that was an ad hoc, you can make an, a parent can make an ad hoc request. Okay. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. And our next report, I just have a brief legislative update I wanted to share. Several of the administrative team and myself have been able to attend. Both One Zone had a breakfast. And then the Hamilton County Legislative Luncheon was last Wednesday where school administration and school board members from across Hamilton County can, we meet and had lunch. And then we listened to incoming legislators. It was Mr. Lopez, well, there's more than this here. Those that serve, will be serving Carmel are Mr. Lopez, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Garcia Wilburn. She has already been serving part of the Carmel area. And so it was, it was good. We were able to ask questions and give them input on what we wanted to, you know, see, hopefully make some, any changes in the next legislative session. And a lot of that really kind of aligned with our, the legislative letter that we have already discussed in our meetings. Next up, Mr. Brown, you have a Carmel Redevelopment Commission report, correct?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. I'm on the Carmel Redevelopment Commission as a board member, a non-voting member. So it's yet another board that I could, I could sit on. It's very interesting. And I did a report on it about a year ago or so that was, got into the TIF and the funding that comes from the redevelopment activities. I'm not going to talk about that. But there was, at the last meeting, which was November 25th, there was Nick Weber, who's the City of Carmel's Executive Director of Economic Development, proposed to the board that we donate $10,000 to the Started Up Program. And he explained that, a little bit about the, what they do. And the donation, the significance of it to Carmel Schools is it's in direct benefit to three educators that we have that participate in that program here at the high school. And I'll, let me read a little bit from their website to give you a better idea of what this program does. "The mission is to empower students and teachers to view life through a lens of innovation and entrepreneurship while building a life of purpose. We believe that purpose comes from engaging with real-world challenges. For teachers, we offer the Innovative Educator Fellowship, which connects educators with year-round support from like-minded peers, exclusive networking opportunities, and all the tools and resources needed to bring meaningful, real-world work into the classroom. For students, we provide opportunities to explore, experiment, and solve problems that truly matter to them, helping them discover their passions and sense of purpose through action. Since 2018, we've engaged over 6,000 students across Indiana through initiatives like Innovate Within Pitch Competition and the Started Up Alumni Program. The state program invites students to, across the state, to showcase their entrepreneurial talents by developing a business idea, pitching it, and competing against other students for incredible prizes at up to $25,000 in cash, scholarships, and travel." And we have, if anyone else wants to chime in after I'm done with more information, please do. But we have three educators that are involved in it now at the high school in the biomedical sciences program, engineering, and fiber arts, which I learned is textiles. And we called it fiber arts these days. And we have upwards of about 300 students that are participating across those three programs. And what's really, what we really like about this program is it brings professionals in in those industries. And they talk about real-world things they're working on. They talk about innovation. And they teach the students, they teach the teachers, so to speak, and which teach the students to look at problems as opportunities for innovation and that they come up with solutions to these problems. And I just think it's wonderful to, rather than look at problems as negative things, they look at it as positive things and to teach these students that they can make a difference by trying to solve them. And that it's not limited to those that get top grades in their classes. It's available for any student. And I remember, I was talking to one of the program directors the other day about it and it reminded me of, when I was in high school, just a couple of years ago, they, someone's supposed to laugh, that we had a guy come in, he was like 30, and he was a multi, self-made multimillionaire. And he explained that he had, he was an entrepreneur, he had some ideas. And he went out and the first two times he failed and lost money. And the third time, it was successful. And it was, it was interesting that all those things that I probably was exposed to in high school, that was one of the, you know, handful that I still remember. So this program reminds me of that. And I understand we have, and I'd like to hear a report maybe sometime, a workshop that might even be good, that we have some employees at the high school that are involved with internships, you know, setting up and coordinating internships. And I think that's great. You know, I have, we have one son and he did that when he was in, he went to Carmel High School. And he participated in a couple of internships. And then he liked it so much. Of course, having the extra money was great. He participated in internships as he went through college. So when he was ready to go out in the work field, he had three job offers. And they had already seen him work and they felt comfortable with him. So I think it's just a wonderful thing to have business leaders come into classrooms in programs like this to educate the kids on innovation and entrepreneurialism and networking and internships and getting out there. So I applaud that. I'm glad it's not a lot of money, but it'll pay for the cost of having one of our educators in the program. And as a CRC board member, I'll try to encourage that they dig a little deeper and maybe we could fund more than this last time. Wanted to share that, so thank you.
Thank you. That sounds like an amazing program. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Our next report is Dr. Beresford's superintendent report.
First, I want to just give my apologies to all you're probably waiting for the financial report. And unfortunately tonight, we, because of the one meeting this month, we're going to have to wait. But we'll get a double one next time. So calm down there in the back row and we'll, we'll get that to you. Tonight, I am representing the Hawks of Prairie Trace Elementary. Go Hawks! And their incredible principal, Kim Piper, and outstanding assistant principal, Jen Brown. And love the work they do with that community. I was looking, their percentage of parents showing up at the, at parent-teacher conferences is incredible as well. So do a really great job there. We have a couple of special programs there that they just embrace with a lot of heart and a lot of hard work. Going into the, into the meeting superintendent report. Winter concerts in full swing across the district. And our middle schools, high school was last week, the winter orchestra concert. Dr. Ostrich and I both attended that. And our elementary schools are also having their winter concerts right now, which is a lot of fun. Every group that, I was, went to the high school one, every group was just amazing. It's kind of fun to watch how the progression of musicianship goes from the very beginning, orchestras up to the top. And so every group was amazing. But our top orchestra has been invited to play at the Midwest Clinic in Chicago on Wednesday. I know you're driving up to see that. And the Midwest Clinic is the, it is like the premier gathering for music teachers to develop professionally. There will be over 17,000 music educators from over 30 countries that will attend. And Carmel High School's orchestra was chosen to play for that clinic. Just, it's a huge honor to be chosen to perform there. And so we're very, very proud, of course, of our students and directors. And we were able to hear the Midwest Clinic performance last week at the orchestra concert. And it was crazy. And so I can hardly wait to hear about it when Dr. Owen the Orchestra gets back. Number two, the new auditorium is almost ready for swimmers. We have water in the pool. And actually tomorrow is going to be the first open house for all the swim team swim kids. And so they'll get to go in and see the place. And then we're going to be hosting meets pretty soon. Now, we're not going to do the official ribbon cutting and open house until the project gets a little farther along. But, and then we'll do it, you know, we'll do a real nice job with that. But it's starting to get a little, a little action. So pretty exciting when you have some kids in there and start paddling. Number three, Aces Week, which was, most of us would call that Finals Week. It begins tomorrow through Thursday. So I want to say good luck to all those Greyhounds as they show what they know. They're going to be busy with tests, projects, presentations, all kinds of assessments. I can guarantee the community, one thing only, is that on Friday morning, the Greyhounds will be sleeping in late because it is a grind of a, of a, of a day for those three. Those three days are tough. So, and then finally, just a heads-up reminder to the community, especially to all current eighth graders and their parents. Academic Transition Night at Carmel High School is January 13th. And that is a super important date. It goes from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. And any eighth grader who lives in Carmel is invited, even if you're not currently in Carmel Clay Schools. And this is your big chance to receive the answers to specific questions about the many academic programs that Carmel High School has to offer. So we have, we have like our open house when people look at the building and all that kind of stuff. But this is, all the people are there to talk about all the programs and very specific information about the different programs. So this is your best opportunity to get the details. So if you want the deets, see when I want, go on the 13th at 5:30 to 8:00. And it's just a meeting you don't want to miss for an eighth grader. This is like one of those key transition opportunities for our eighth graders and their parents. So don't miss out on that. And that concludes my superintendent report. I do want to say best wishes to everybody for a great holiday break. Be safe, get some rest, and enjoy some great time with those you love. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. I have a couple of quick announcements. This Friday, December 20th, is a teacher work day, so there are no students. And as Dr. Beresford noted, most of our students will be very glad to have that day off after all of their finals. So then the 20th through January 6th is winter break. Students return on January 7th. Our first board meeting in January is January 13th. That's a workshop session and reorganizational meeting. January 20th, our schools are closed for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And then our second school board meeting of January is January 27th for our regular session. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you, Greg. A second? Thank you, Jennifer. Meeting adjourned.